On June 7th at 7:07. First thing I want to do, because we have one of our engineers here this evening is to with Gilmore Associates, two items on our agenda. So Kurt, we're gonna hold you up.
I guess.
About the environmental Phase 2 study for the Conrail track on Old Route 13.
Sure. Today, we had a conference call with Conrail and some other involved parties, namely, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, who is overseeing the PennDOT funding that was allocated to the trail project along Old Route 13. And the topic of conversation is acquisition of that land from Conrail that the borough needs in order to implement that project. And as you may all be aware, one of the big sticking points has been the environmental liability of that land, as it's been used for a rail line for over 100 years. Our office did a Phase 1 environmental site assessment report, which recommended that a Phase 2 environmental site assessment report be completed. And that involves physical testing of the soil along that rail line to identify if there's any contamination on the site. It would be a problem to implement that trail project that the borough is looking to complete. So we've been back and forth with Conrail for a number of months diligently trying to get them to retain the liability instead of passing it on to the borough. You know, they have concerns with the site. The borough has concerns with the site. But today, hopefully, made some progress. And it seems like the next step would be to do a limited Phase 2 environmental site assessment, which includes taking four samples along that 2,000-foot length of rail line, see what the results are. And depending on what those results are, then regroup with the parties and see what the next steps would be, whether or not we need to do more testing, or whether or not the site comes back clean and we can move forward with the borough getting an easement or a license from Conrail to use that land. Our office provided a proposal to doing the limited Phase 2 and including those four samples for $15,200. And so that's where we are today. In order to take the next step with Conrail in trying to resolve the outstanding environmental issues, we would recommend then doing that limited Phase 2 study.
Just to let council know and the public, this is a project that the previous administration started almost 10 years ago, and they were successful in receiving a grant for, I think, $800,000. That's even before we came here. And it's been over 10 years, and we're still working on trying to acquire this ground. But the biggest problem is environmental. We don't want to take the ground and end up with all the liability, because we know over the years, the boxcars that were there and tanker cars had to leak something into the ground. We only want to use it for a walking path and to beautify the gateway coming into Bristol. So when you work on projects, you realize how long and how much effort has to go into acquiring something. And again, this is a project that's been on the books 10 years. Hopefully, we're getting closer. Kurt, on the parking for our back, why don't you update council on that?
Can I just add something?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Dillon.
There was, we'd start the phone call at 3 o'clock, it didn't get finished about 4:25. Congressman Murphy's staff were also on the line. The PennDOT officials were on the line. A representative from DVR PC wants to have a conversation tomorrow after he goes back through all the records. Mr. Slarno will be speaking with Conrail's attorney tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll have a recommendation in your package to proceed or not proceed for Monday night. But again, trying to get this thing moving along. So I just wanted to add those tidbits, Mr. Slarno.
I want to make a comment, because I see the newspapers are here. There's no evidence at this point that there are any environmental problems on that property. The Phase 1, which really just looks at the past use and the records, just recommended that there be a Phase 2, which is a sampling. And that's what is being proposed to council, is to authorize Gilmore to do a sampling to see if there are any problems in the first, really, we're just looking at the first two or three feet, because that's all we would need to excavate to put a path in. If there are any problems, then we're gonna have to go back with Conrail and see what's involved in remediating that and who's gonna pay the cost. Obviously, Conrail, who's really not getting anything out of this, kinda wants to limit their cost here, and they feel they're kinda doing us a favor by letting us entertain converting that to a path. But I think it should be made clear, there is no evidence at this point, nothing's been found on that property. As far as we know, it can be cleaned environmentally. We're just considering going the next step, which obviously, we have to do.
As far as a walking path, you don't need, you know, per se, a great bill, Clean Bill of Rights to pave something and go over it. I mean, we have a walking path for the entire town that was put on railroad property. So again, it's...
At the end of the day, we'll need to get the DEP's consent on, if there is something found, we would work closely with the DEP during the design phase to make sure that ultimately, what's out there is a safe walking trail.
And on the boxcars with all the graffiti, we met with them again. They have assured, I think the manager, correct me if I'm wrong, that the boxcars that have graffiti, they will pull inside the yard, and the ones without graffiti will be outside. They're gonna do their best to do this.
They've done it already. They pulled the cars.
They pulled them off. So they are willing to work with us. We explained to them how important it is to keep our gateways looking good for people to come in. Parking lot.
Okay. Earlier this year, our office was authorized to proceed with a construction project to the rear parking lot of the borough hall to achieve a number of things, one of which is to try to come up with a better layout, so that cars can come and go from that lot more efficiently, try to maximize the number of parking stalls that are out there, so there's adequate parking for the police staff, borough staff, and visitors, and also to address some of the grading and drainage issues that are out there now. You know, one of the big ones is that the parking lot is sloped towards the building, and given its recent renovations and the type of use that's in the lower level of the building, it's important that water drain away from the building. So we've been working for the last couple months. We completed a survey after the snow thawed out, and we came up with some alternative designs for a parking layout. And I'm just here tonight to show a few of the sketches to the council for consideration to decide which layout is preferable. So I'll run through, if I can. Hopefully, I didn't just mess up the cameras. But this is the sketch of the existing parking lot in the lower portion of the plan. And you can see, it's a little dysfunctional. It's very tight. It's very difficult for police cars to come and go, and for visitors to park. It has some area that can be maximized for additional parking, one of which is an existing building that is slated to be demolished in order to accommodate more parking. I understand that the building is currently used to contain a fuel tank for borough vehicles, and that would be proposed to be relocated to the Public Works Yard. And that building is located, it's shown on the left-hand side of the sheet, right there. The first alternative is to, you'll see the building is removed. I'll add that the existing parking has anywhere between 17 and 19 spaces. The first layout, you'll see the building's removed, and you'll see a similar layout. But what's been done is, there's some existing window wells up against the building. If we remove them, because there's no longer windows there, they've been blocked up, we can gain some more width in between the aisle to allow cars to come and go more freely. But it still follows the same layout. You come in the alley at the bottom of the sheet, enter at the same location as exists now, but wherever, where the building is now, have four parking spaces, and then have a center aisle with diagonal parking on either side. This proposed layout shows 20 parking spaces. The second layout has a similar parking area, but the stalls are configured differently. Still has the four spaces where the building is, but instead of having diagonal parking, it has parallel and perpendicular parking. Parallel being up against the building, and perpendicular parking being out towards the alley, with the same configuration for the entrance and exit. This layout yields 21 parking spaces. Louts are still pretty tight, but it's a limited amount of space, and that's the best we can do, given the circumstance.
Kurt, excuse me, is the exit and the entrance the same? I can't tell from here.
Yeah. You'd enter downward the building is, and you'd come down the center aisle, and exit between an existing utility pole and the sidewalk out front. From the existing condition, the exit gets pushed down closer to Mulberry Street.
Okay.
Kurt.
This yields the most parking spaces, but some people don't like parallel parking, so it's a trade-off.
Well, I'd like to do it if possible. It's the first time we're all seeing these drawings. Let's maybe have Mr. Dillon find out when you could come back. I'd like to put this on the agenda for Monday to authorize your firm to go out and solicit bids for this project, so we can get this done. But I'd like the chief and the mayor to meet out there on-site and walk through this and make sure we got the right plan for all the police cars. I mean, we discussed this 10 minutes ago, maybe all the SUVs park in one location since they're bigger vehicles, I don't know. But the only thing's going to change is the way the parking lot is striped. As far as the construction of the parking lot, that's gonna be done for the drainage and all that, no matter what. So we have time to decide, you wanna parallel park, you wanna diagonal park, however, the work still has to be done. So I'm gonna ask council to put this on the agenda for Monday to authorize you to go out to bid, and in the meantime, while it's striped, once we award this bid, meet out there again with members of council, the mayor and the chief, and say, okay, this is exactly how we want to stripe it. So if anybody has any questions for Kurt on this project, Jimmy?
Maureen.
Anthony?
Yes. Is that building that's being torn down, is original with this building?
I have no idea.
I think so.
I just, I really would hate to tear that building down. I know it holds a gas tank, and it's pretty new, the gas tank.
I think, too, well, the gas tank has to go, so we have to take the roof off. We have to bring the building up to code with egress, exits, a ramp to get in for handicap accessible. We looked at the cost. When you get done, the building's about 400 square feet, 500 square feet, the most.
If that.
The firemen never contacted us anymore after several attempts. You're here, you want to discuss something?
I'm vice president of the fire department. This is the first I've been told to come up and discuss this or ask about this building.
Well, I don't know where anybody's been, but Merle's sitting there, and Mr. Riccio's been contacted how many times, Merle? It does?
I brought it up on the company floor, and it was discussed, and they were supposed to have somebody to contact you.
That was how many months ago?
But, no, this was just last fire company's meeting.
Well, I know it's been six months that Tony Riccio was supposed to contact the manager or somebody and let us know if anybody was interested in the building, and it has never taken place. If you are interested in a building, it's only four parking spots that we lose, but we want to make sure that you're gonna make a commitment to do the building. It's not gonna sit there for another year or two and nothing get done.
Well, my understanding is that you just want us out from downstairs.
Pardon me?
You want us out from downstairs?
Never, never discussed that.
See, that's the part that I'm, I'm being pointed to the solace.
Want to discuss anything after the meeting?
Right.
Or set up a meeting with any member of council, the mayor, whoever oversees the fire departments? We'll be glad to meet with anybody at any time. But I think you're getting a lot of misinformation. Pardon me?
An executive session, or just straight up?
Any way you want to discuss it.
Also, another question. How, how many feet are the parking spots? Are they nine and a half, nine?
They're nine feet wide.
Nine feet wide?
Going down to eight and a half feet, or even eight feet, and it wouldn't gain another space.
Got you.
I might take that back. The perpendicular ones might get a narrow.
I just don't like to tear down buildings. That's it.
No, what we're saying is...
But I understand that we have reached out to Anthony.
They've been, Morton notified several times in writing and everything about this building, and nobody has approached this council in the last six months to say you're interested. So again, I apologize if you didn't get the right communication, but our job is to work with you guys if you're willing, if you want the building. I don't think anybody here is against that, but you gotta make a commitment to fix it. There's no heat, there's no electric, there's no plumbing, there's nothing in it. So to spend $100,000 to renovate this building, I thought it would be taking good money and throwing it away, but if that's something your company wants to do, believe me, we're willing to work with you. So I don't know who's giving you the wrong information, but again, if you, soon as you want to meet, we're available.
Can I make another statement? Never, ever has this council president or this council said that we want you out of here.
No, I didn't mean out like that. I meant like, to move the base, as far as that goes. Because I'm, I'm willing to have it set up now, but other members...
I mean, you have the conference room to your, anytime, you have a key to the building.
Correct.
You have bathroom facilities, you have a brand-new firehouse. I mean, I don't know...
I was the one who set up the downstairs with the TV, so we don't have to go downstairs.
Right.
The exercise equipment's down there, and I think the guys want to move that out from downstairs, because of the fact we have a problem with mold back in the beginning.
Well, let's, like I said, let's get together, you and whoever, and we'll try to get it resolved.
But I think that should be done quick.
Yeah, we're proceeding with this. So it's either you're going to take the building or not.
I'm telling you, we'll deal here, if I'm trying.
Right.
This is like last minute.
Kurt, thank you.
Exactly. Thanks.
All right. What else is here we need to do? George, you want to update us on the tot lots, so we can move forward with that?
Merle?
You take it easy, old man. Everybody knows that we've been meeting with council and some representatives from playground companies, along with Mr. Waldron, and coming up with new layouts and new equipment and what needs to be fixed for every tot lot in town. We are now ready to proceed with the improvements. The money's been secured, so it's a matter of authorizing George now to order everything and move forward, so.
Kind of like in Phase 1 of the things, we evaluated all our playgrounds, and we came up with a list of parts or equipment that we had needed. Done, the, all that equipment was ordered. It's all new swings, they're all gonna be the same. Everything's being upgraded to one type, so it's easy to get parts and replace parts and that kind of thing. The second part of it was to look at the surfaces, which are, we haven't touched in about three years. We kicked it around a lot, a lot of different surfaces, and what we had come up with, and I don't know if you have any packets, but the Spruce Street, Noddy Street playgrounds, we're going back with a wood fiber. We feel that's the best. We had our engineer out there with us, looking at these locations, and they're going back to the wood fibers in those locations. Pond Street Playground, the swing set, I'm sorry, the swing set is gonna be moved. The one that's previous there was put back in 15 years ago, just lacks the space that it needs. We're gonna be relocating that up farther a little bit, and in that area where the swing set was, we're gonna be putting some other smaller equipment in there, and that surface there is gonna be a rubber surface. It's like a rubber chip. Both surfaces will have that rubber in there, and they're also, we're also getting wearing mats underneath this equipment, because as you see, the older kids get on there, and they kick this stuff out, so hopefully, these wearing mats will help prevent that. The last one, Trent Avenue, gonna get a rubber chip surface, and also the wearing mats in that playground. Again, these, the last two playgrounds, Pond Street and Trent Avenue, we feel get the most use, and that's why we're upgrading the taking surface. And of course, they cost a lot more money, but in the long run, maintenance and safety, this is the way we feel is best to handle these playgrounds.
George, I have Maple Street.
Maple Street's going back with the wood fibers. That's the Odd Street, we call that Odd Street.
All the equipment's getting fixed.
All that stuff, we haven't, we have already. We just, we just received it about a week ago, so we're making arrangements to go out and install the new parts.
Right.
Like I said, all the swing sets are getting done over completely. Any parts that were missing or broken are gonna get replaced. At the Spruce Street area, we had some vandalism up there where the kids actually, I don't know how they did it, but we had a slide that they put a giant hole, and that one swing, slide was about 900 bucks, so.
Break that with a sledgehammer.
Oh, it's unbelievable, how they broke it. But that's, we got a new part for that. And at that one there, we're gonna be adding a light onto that Spruce Street.
That's on Spruce Street, where we said we could come off that pole with some electric.
Right. And all the others, we evaluated the lights that were there, and we kinda feel that what's there is good for now, but again, we're gonna look at it a little bit harder, so. And also, in all these, all new signage, hopefully, we can enforce the signage. It's gonna be like from, I think, two to 12 we're going with, or five to 12, and hopefully, we can keep the older kids off it and the younger ones be able to use it.
All the signage will give the police authority to, if a kid's overage, he's not permitted on those swings or to break things. They'll have a, there'll be signs posted, and we'll adopt that. Mr. Slarno, you said we have to adopt that sign into, as an ordinance or something, for the age limits and other things. We don't have that currently.
No. We have signs.
We have signs, but I don't know how much, Jim, maybe it was you who said we have to...
Yeah, there's, the existing ordinance, in fact, doesn't even include certain tot lots.
We're just gonna update the entire ordinance on that. So once it's done...
Probably have that ready for next month's meeting.
And the total cost, George, that was in our packets, about $70,000.
$70,000, this phase of it.
For Phase 1.
The parts was about $80,000, $79,000 for the parts. And like I said, they're all new swing sets, not swing sets, but actual swings. So like I said, this is the second phase of it, is the surface, and an improvement at Pond Street, and then...
And then there's also, we're including a new one at Jefferson Avenue that Mr. Musi and Mr. Sabatini been fighting for.
At the ball fields, yeah.
At the ball fields. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Waldron on the tot lots? Maureen?
I see that you sent, four men were sent for a playground safety class, and I'm just curious about this rubber, you know, mat. Does it get hot, or, that's what worries me, that...
There's some, there's some talk going back and forth with that. I think what they were concerned with is the poured-in rubber surface would generate more heat, almost like an ashtrough, compared to like the chips would, you know, get some air in there, move it around a little bit. And of course, the wood fibers, there's no heat generator for all of that, but I think the stuff that they had concerns with are the poured-in surfaces, like one piece, so that's why we...
I had heard news reports on that, where kids had gotten burned, and I just wanted to be sure that that's not, you know. And then I saw the safety class, I thought that was great that you, that four of your guys went there, that's awesome.
We send, we send at least four guys every year to that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the tot lots? Mr. Sabatini?
Conditions of graffiti, have they slowed down?
I think they have slowed down.
Okay.
Again, you know, you never know when it's gonna happen. I mean, we'll see in the next couple of weeks when the kids get out of school, I'm sure.
Have the kids, they're gonna be getting out of school soon. How long do you expect the project to last?
Once we get the okay in order, the material will be here in about two to three weeks, so I think we can get it in in a couple of days, to be honest with you. I don't see it taking long.
Very good, George. Mr. Musi?
George.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Trash receptacles, they're gonna be part of that $70,000 that we're getting from the county?
We looked at it, we're gonna add more where needed, yes.
And we're gonna buy the ones we've been buying, the expensive ones?
Yeah, all through town. In fact, on that same line, it's not, nothing to do with the playground.
They're expensive, it's just that they're hard to vandalize or...
Hard to vandalize, and they held up well. I mean, again, on that same line, we just installed four more down the waterfront area, kinda helped that out.
I know the ones on Mill Street, everybody's really happy with.
I have to say, George, thank you, because that's made a tremendous difference. Have you seen the difference? Just adding four trashcans along the marsh area there, and there's so little trash. I think people just need someplace to throw it, you know?
Yeah, we find, always, some people are using them for more than just picking up and, you know, they're bringing their trash, but overall, I think we're trying to stay on top of it, emptying them more often and that kind of things, but people are using, which is a great thing.
A gentleman walked into pharmacy the other day when I was there, and this is before he installed them, and he goes, "Where do you throw your trash at in this town? Can I throw my trash in here?" And he only had a candy wrapper. When you throw it to pharmacies, after they're there, they're throwing them in.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're trying to do that in a little professional manner, and the town's looking great. Just a quick update on the lighting, all the lighting's done. We had a chance to change out our last one down in that Lions Park today, so all the lightings, that first phase of that project's done.
I don't know if anybody had a chance to drive down Mill Street at night, put start down on Pond or Old Route 13 and turn on the mill and see how nice that street looks at night with all the new lights and Lions Park. You guys did a great job on that.
Yeah, we got the two at the fountain, I don't know if anybody had a chance to see the fountain.
That bucket truck does a lot.
I think it's only paid for itself.
No, there's no question. All right, any, any more on the playgrounds, because we got a long agenda.
Just for the record, this, the material is gonna be purchased under the CoStarz contract, which is state bid, let's...
All right, George, while you're here, we're gonna ask council to also make an agenda item to award the bid for a public works yard cleanup. Just to bring council up to date on that, myself, Mr. Dillon, George, and Danucci, kind of, with the excavation, met down there. They're coming up with a plan on how to screen everything and shake it and put it in piles and start moving it. If we award the bid, I think they need 10 days to mobilize to get started, so I don't know if you have any comments, George, or you want to add anything to that, but I think we, and the DEP was there that day. So they're happy with the process, how we're gonna handle it, and we told them, we're hoping in the next few months or by the end of the summer, this can be all cleaned up and move forward. Has any questions on that?
No, I'd just like to make a comment, that was a very good price.
Yeah.
I have a question. According to our bid calculations, Danucci was the low bidder in the amount of $2,400 per week.
$2,400 per week?
Right.
Different. Just for the screening. Let me see. For his one machine, it's 780 a day, 37.
I see that. The screener is 2,400 per week. I'm just using this as an example.
Go ahead.
The screener for general asphalt is 3,000 a week.
Right.
For Haas excavating, it's 65. And for premium, it's 4,000. But of, of course, 2,400 per week is, is, is the lowest bid, but we don't know how many weeks he's going to be there. Do we have, do we have a?
None of them's giving you a total on weeks. This is only a day or a week rate?
I mean, he charges us less, but it takes him twice as long to do the job.
Borough, the bid spec called for that we expect to have an average of 1,000 cubic yards a day to be, you know, screened and set aside. So we, we have.
Minimum productivity.
There's a minimum, right, everybody that bid this job, we're hoping that they can do 1,000 cubic yards a day.
And our engineers go to monitor that? Somebody going to do that? George going to do it?
George will be down there. Now, don't.
The mayor's given us an estimated calculation, so we know what our approximate cubic yards is. So, you know, weather conditions, whatever, we think we have a estimate on what it's going to cost.
So right now, it's 6,100 a week for the loader and the screener. And then you got to start putting in the truck driver, you got to put in a labor. So what they don't want to do is pile this stuff so high, then at the end, we have all this material to move. So wood has to be moved off-site. They may come in with three trucks and three drivers that day. And they're thinking, what did he say? They could do five, maybe six loads a day? Maybe six, depending on how fast they can get back and forth to the landfill. And they can't go down rackless, so they got to go out on 13 and all the way up.
I don't have a problem with any of that. I just, I just, I just don't, just got to come back, and we wind up later, maybe the cheapest bid isn't the cheapest bid. It takes some.
Well, how do you not take the cheapest bid?
The manager answered the question. If it's going to take, we have minimum productivity of 1,000, that's fine. Well, somebody will keep an eye on it, that's all.
Look, it would not run any, Mr. President, because the other ones, that their bids were 3,000 a week or 6,500 a week, if they took the same amount of weeks, it's still more than.
Danucci was the low bid on all phases of the project. It's a matter of now is it going to take them two months, three months, four months, five months? Nobody knows. We have a productivity, we have, they have to do so much a day. But he said they may dig into that pile and find that they, they're having a problem, they're going to drop down maybe to 3, 400 a day. They don't know, but somebody will be overseeing the project.
You never know what's back there.
All the disposal costs, don't forget. Everything that's got to be hauled off-site. This isn't going to be a cheap, you know, just add up what they're charging per day and think that's the end of it. We have no idea where this job's going to go, but we don't have a choice either. Okay. Anything else on the Borough Yard cleanup? George, thank you. Herbie, what do you have?
Just a couple of things. May turned out to be a really busy month, especially Memorial Day. Memorial Day, we had three fires, one at the Old Horn Snyder School that was fixed off by the fire department because it was a porta potty was on fire, but it was right next to the windows of the building. They could have easily broke the windows and the fire could have got into the building. Guys went back to the station and within an hour, there was a fire up in Harriman, Fire Good Avenue, house fire. That was fairly minor. They got back to the station, and within an hour, we had a very serious fire on Chestnut Street, where again, quick action of the fire department, fire in the middle of the row on the first floor, and they were able to find it basically to the house of origin. The week before that, we had had a third-floor bedroom on Otter Street. The two serious house fires that we had come back to basically extension cords being used improperly. One case, the fire on Otter Street, we found the smoke detector. It was under the mattress that was involved in the fire. So again, we're still working on the smoke detectors, it's important, everybody check The Chestnut Street fire, we sent four firefighters to the hospital, three of them with heat exhaustion and one with a, with a knee sprain. The three heat exhaustion have been treated and released. The fellow with the knee sprain, he's had some follow-up visits. So his care's ongoing. We're also working on a mass casualty drill in November with Amtrak and SEPTA. They'll actually bring a railcar up into the Green Lane area, and the fire department will be able to perform various evolutions with that railcar. It's, there's a requirement that SEPTA run one of these drills every year. They've asked to run one in Bristol Borough this year. And it'll be an excellent opportunity for the firefighters to train. There's also the potential that SEPTA or Amtrak will come up with some funding that will allow the police department and the rescue squad to participate in the drill. And the tentative date on that's November 6th, and we'll have several more planning meetings before we get to that. One of the, my fire company yesterday participated in the Elks Flag Retirement Ceremony that they do down in the parking lot with the Boy Scouts, and that went very, very well. And the last thing is, I'm working on getting some information together on firework safety that will get up on the, on the TV and on the website.
Any questions for Herbie?
Herbie, was, obviously the porta potty fire was arson?
Yeah, we have, we had a witness that identified some juveniles in the area, but they weren't able to give us any kind of specifics, other than that there were several individuals in that area right before the fire occurred.
Maybe, Mr. Dillon, do you know why there'd still be a porta potty next to the Old Elementary School? Construction's been finished for quite some time.
At the moment, no, I don't.
Look into that for me, please?
Porta potty's now gone. It's melded down in the parking lot.
Oh, is that bad? Okay, all right, well, that's one way to get rid of them.
Herbie, the three residential fires, were they rentals or owner occupied?
Um.
Or you don't know?
At least two of them are rentals.
Just.
House was occupied.
Yeah, that's one of the residential fires.
I say residential, Pat.
Just want to say thank you to your hard, the hard work that you guys put out all the time.
Two other things, Dr. Al, the kind of strange things that the fire department's been involved in in the last two weeks is, we responded to McDonald's for a, an elderly man with his arm caught in a chair. And then this past week, we also, we had a four-year-old with their arm caught in a treadmill. That the fire department's prompt response and quick actions got both of those individuals out.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Herbie, on another note, talking about firemen and volunteers, and just to bring everybody up to date on, are we aware that Donnie Crowe, who comes, every meeting's very sick? And he's been now put into a nursing home. So just certainly remember him in your prayers, and hopefully he.
When did this happen, Ralph?
Few weeks, like, real quick, he got sick, he got an infection, he was in intensive care. And I spoke to him the other day, and, I mean, he doesn't sound good at all, so just keep him in your prayers.
Do you know which nursing home?
Do you know where he is?
I think he's in Silver Lake. Give you, if anybody wants his cell phone, he answers it, but he's really not doing good at all.
Last month, we sent Officer Gonzalez to Crisis Intervention Team Training. It's our second certified officer now we have in CIT training. And it's, the training's for getting a better, providing better services, better police interaction with people who have mental and emotional illnesses. And I plan to send more officers as those, those classes come out available throughout this year and next year. The fire chief and emergency management coordinator and I met with the principal of the high school and the, and the school nurse in preparation of the graduation ceremonies on June 15th. It's scheduled to be outdoors, weather permitting, if not, it'll go indoors at the high school. And we're looking at approximately 70 graduates this year. All this week, starting today, we're going to be doing seatbelt compliance checks throughout town. And all, next week, we're going to be doing aggressive driving details. And all those are funded by PennDOT grants. And our first festival coming up, where we'll be providing officers, will be the Celtic Day Festival on June 27th.
Any questions for the chief? Get off easy tonight, buddy.
I got one for him. Between you and the mayor, a detail, I've been getting complaints about Jefferson Avenue, the ball field, stop signs. Kids, we talked about this in the beginning, I don't know if we just do it in the beginning and then we forget about it, but I'd like to see some kind of report or something, who was there, if we gave out any tickets. Okay, because the neighbors, and those neighbors put up a lot there, they got ball, people playing ball there all year, but they're used to it because they lived there and they knew what they were doing. But they're more concerned about the children who are crossing the streets. Thanks.
Okay. I have a lot of things to go over tonight, I'm going to move as quick as I can. Something disinformational and some I want to discuss. Jim, quickly, there's a light out in the alley, George, on Lincoln Avenue, where you turn into that alley that goes behind, there's a light in that, if we can get that, I got a call right before I came here tonight. Shredding to Bristol Borough, Shred Day, if anybody wants to shred things, I know there's people that are interested in shredding some of their old documents and things, is June 19th in front of Borough Hall, and that's from?
What is it? Nine to one.
Nine to one. So if the two newspapers could give us some kind of public service on that, we would appreciate it. Still looking for people on this parking committee. If anybody's interested, contact the Borough, I'm going to appoint the committee, hopefully by the end of the month, so we can get that moving. I'm interested in any members of council that's interested in serving on the contract negotiations with the police, contract is now up this year. It will end 2010. And we already got a list of their demands, and we now need to sit down and discuss it and counter some of their demands of, I don't know, Jimmy, you can't sit on that, right?
No. I'm interested.
Lorraine, you're interested? Anthony?
I'd definitely be interested.
Robin, you can't, because you're on the civil service, right?
I'll help.
Because, all right, right now, we got Lorraine and, Lorraine, Anthony and Pat. If Anthony could, I know you've worked, your schedule's hard.
Mr. President, do we have a copy that I could look over of?
What they're submitting? I didn't even see it yet, Pat, so.
Okay.
Once the manager gets a packet together, I know the mayor's going to sit in on some of this and look over some of these things, so.
If that becomes available, if Mr. Dillon could send me a copy.
But it's going to take a lot of time, a lot of hours and a lot of meetings, because we have until eight, until we go to arbitration. We have to either resolve it or go to arbitration in September, so.
We can't attend the meetings, so we're not on time.
There's not a quorum.
What's the last, what's the final date, September?
It has to be resolved by. I'd like to make an agenda item to hire Monday night, one of the top three police officers that are on the eligibility list. That eligibility list, I guess, will be given to us when?
I have it tonight, I thought perhaps after the meeting, if we could have an executive session just to discuss.
I would like to make that an agenda item, to hire one cop at this meeting, and then after that meeting, I know the mayor likes to hire three or four cops, so let's get one hired now, Bob, and then we'll work on the other, the other two. Five years ago, we sat here as a council and discussed the ice skating rink. And it's been an ongoing thorn in our side. We have hired outside management companies to come in, thanks to the Grundy Foundation. We have paid $80,000 a year for, they, they have paid management companies to turn the rink around to no success. We have hired new staff. We have tried almost everything that we can. And it's still, we stopped the bleeding, but the taxpayers are still picking up this mortgage. We met with the county, I'm not saying that's a debt issue, we met with private investors. I'd like to make a recommendation to council that, in my opinion, we probably have hired one of the best managers in all Bucks County. There's no question that Mr. Dillon was part of this borough turning around. I mean, we have, as a council, did what we can do, but seems like we all rely on his advice to move Bristol Borough forward. I'd like to recommend, and I met with people from the Grundy, our board, and asked them if they would approve this, and I'm going to ask council to approve, to make Jim the executive director of the ice skating rink. Which means he'll oversee all operations at a rink. We will not reduce any staff, we will not get, get rid of anybody, but we need somebody hands-on every day with the knowledge and the know-how to go in and run a facility. This is a business, just like this borough is a business that we run every day. We're dealing with millions of dollars of taxpayers' money, and I don't feel we're getting the results from what we anticipated that would happen there. I think that give Jim six months in this building and come back to this council and say, this is what we improved, this is what needs to be done, this is, it's a losing effort, there's no way it's ever going to work. But from using outside firms and outside, I think we have somebody here qualified. Now, the reason I'm asking council to authorize this, he's going to be given, we're going to give him the availability to utilize all of our staff if needed. Meaning if Angie needs to go there and help out with the accounting, if Maria needs to go there, if any of our secretaries need to, whatever we need, we're going to be taking away from here, going there. But there'll be no additional cost at a borough. We could hire Jim for a dollar a year. He said he would accept that. The dollar is only to make it legal that he has this appointment.
Is that dollar negotiable?
Yeah, we'd give them less. We had a, they had a meeting here the other day with the board of directors for the rink, the recreation authority, and I explained to Mr. Harris and Mr. Crotrochi, we had a meeting, they both agreed that this was the right direction to go in. They called a board meeting here on Wednesday, I think of last week, and voted unanimously to appoint Jim to this position. I'd just like council now to authorize that Monday night officially to make him, to appoint him executive director of the ice skating rink. And I think we're going to see a big difference in how the overall facility is run, and we're going to get an honest answer. Not that the people we have there aren't capable. I don't want to take anything away, because Denise works very hard to make this rink and turn it around to what it is today. We need somebody that's going to go there, understands business. Again, this is a business handling millions of dollars, and I don't think people realize how important this is to make this move. So start with Jimmy. Any comments or questions or opinions?
No.
Lorraine?
I think it's great. I know it's a hard undertaking, but I, I think Jim's up for the challenge.
Anthony?
I think I could. You're fine.
I have no problem with Mr. Dillon taking on this position, but in the rink business, it's a very erratic, very up and down arena. And ice time sells at certain prices per time of the year. Think that, I hope, he'll work with Denise in a good fashion. time of the year, I think that, I hope, he'll work with Denise in a good fashion to make this thing work.
All right, well, the key to the whole thing is that everybody there right now is doing what they have to do to make it work.
Right.
But I think that what we're lacking is a business skill and management skills, like Denise is very good with ice, she knows the hockey business, like Rich knows the hockey business.
There's no doubt in my mind that Mr. Dillon has been a very big asset to this council, no question, but that, you know, if that's how we want to do it, that's fine.
Robin?
I approve.
You approve?
I approve.
I know that, for just to give you an example, this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, I think he must have put 15 hours into this building, for every, he does, Mr. Dillon does not get overtime, he's a salary employee who puts no less than 60 hours a week into this borough as it is now, and I had asked him, Jim, do you want to take this challenge on, it may include another 10, 15 hours going there at night, stopping in on weekends, he's willing to do it, that's how important it is to this borough that we either turn this facility around, or we get a good explanation of, this is the best we're going to do.
Ralph, when you say turn the facility around, you're, you're, we're basically looking to see if we can just produce more income.
More income, is it run right?
As long as people understand that we can't, we'll never make enough money to pay off the mortgage, but we need to make enough money to.
Well, is it run, is it open at the right hours, do we have enough staff, are we overstaffed? Does, I mean, there's so much that the board of directors, when I met with them, that they're doing the best they can, but they come in and they volunteer their time and they have their monthly meetings, and they try to implement procedures, now whether that takes place or not, the advantage we have as council, we have somebody to rely on, if Mr. Sabatini or Mr. Musi picks up the phone in the morning and says, Mr. Dillon, I need X, Y, Z done, it's done.
Absolutely.
No question, it gets done because we have the people in place, whether it's the street department, no matter what, if you call George, if the manager emails George, whatever needs to be done gets done, therefore, I don't think we have that at the rink, we have capable people that know how to run the facility as far as the ice, like Pat said, the scheduling, and things that Mr. Dillon I don't think wants to get involved in, I think he wants to oversee the entire project to make sure everything is running the way it should run, that's what we're looking for, somebody to come, come back to us and say, everybody's doing what they have to do, this is the best we can do.
And with that being said, will we be dissolving the board?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not going to, council is not going to get involved in this at all, all we're doing is appointing him.
Just sending him over there.
So nobody can come in and say, why are you spending three, four hours a day at the rink, why are you spending Tuesdays at the rink? Whatever his schedule is going to be flexible, but he will not deprive the borough on what has to be done here.
Very good.
He's just taking on a major responsibility, and I thank you for that personally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was one important. The other thing I want to talk about, and Matt's in the back room filming this meeting, and I'm going to ask him to come out here, is a few years ago, I met with the chief, and we tried to implement, I remember Reed seeing a thing on the news about IBM putting cameras out and things like that, and I've been talking to Matt for the last, I guess, year or more about putting cameras in, about maybe two months ago, myself, Matt and the mayor met, and we discussed again about cameras. I think it's time that we finally bite the bullet and go out and purchase this camera, the server, everything we need to do to get up and running, it's probably about $50,000, $60,000 in cost to do this, there'll be so many permanent cameras, there'll be cameras that are mobile, they could set up if, in an area that they feel they're having a problem with, we could put them on the tot lots, the baseball fields, we could monitor this. What I like about this system is that it's also user-friendly for people that own businesses throughout the town, let's say the Grundy Library came to us and said, they want to put 10 cameras into their complex and tie them into our system, we have the capability of doing that, they would purchase all the equipment, do the installation, and they can monitor their cameras from wherever, or give their password, they won't monitor our cameras, but they can monitor us, if somebody else comes in, if the canal works, or somebody on Mill Street says, I want to put a camera in my store, all this is the same thing that Falls Township is now going, and Matt, let me let you explain a little bit more about this system.
Well, the system has the initial server, the backbone, that's the, the main workforce of the system, that allows us to attach IP cameras to the system and give a feed to any web-based or client, so we have the option to use it in the cruisers, in the police cars to monitor it, we could use it here in the building, or if a business wanted to get involved with the system, we can give them access right from a browser, they could log right into the backbone and see their cameras. The system's very flexible in that way, so say Grundy wanted to buy a certain type of camera, another location wanted different types of cameras, they're all IP-based, the cameras are very flexible, so price ranges can be accommodated, if a local business wanted to put a camera up, but they didn't have a lot of money, we have cameras to meet those needs, or if someone wanted to spend, you know, we have something for everybody, so there's flexibility in the system, you're not locked in any proprietary camera, you can use a Sony, you can use an Axis, any type. The initial system here will include the backbone, also a series of fixed cameras and remote cameras, some various locations that the police have decided upon that I'm not going to discuss, it's for their security needs, there will be some, I can, I can say that the baseball fields are one of the areas we're looking at to put cameras, fixed cameras to cover, also possibly.
All the tot lots?
Tot lots, Lyons Park, and some other locations, there's flexibility in that, the police will have the ability to, to control, to move, to monitor as they need, so there is flexibility in the system, it's not rigid, I mean, it's very flexible, we can get things up and running very quickly, and with that, also with the ability of the, here with the bucket trucks and electricians and your, you know, the great maintenance staff, we can really get equipment moved around very fast.
What I like about the equipment is there's also, let's say the tot lots are being, they're under surveillance, well, this camera's going to go dormant until there's movement or something happens, if there's a police officer driving around town and he's down at the other end of town, and there's something going on at the tot lot, say on Maple Street, that camera will pop up right in his car and tell him there's some activity, he could view that camera immediately, find out what's going on, and they could dispatch there.
Yeah, the analytic options are very, modern technology's fantastic, it's not just motion-based anymore, it's rule-based, you have the option where you get an alert right on the camera system, it can also send a text message to various phones, so if something meets a criteria on a camera in a location, they, it gets, you get a message out right away to the proper people, so you have flexibility in that, and they're varied, you can put analytics on a camera for, you know, certain areas, you can do, you know, time-based, so after a certain period of night, you know, different rules are met, so a lot of flexibility in that regard as well.
So I, I just think with the vandalism that we just had, you know, throughout the town, drug work, I mean, surveillance work, there's so much that could be done, and what Matt said is, every year you could add 10, 15 cameras, you could add more cameras that you could put up today, like he said, our bucket truck could have it up, and tomorrow we want to move it to another location, there's so much that we can do with these cameras, and again, we're not going to discuss where they're going or how, but some of our public areas will have fixed cameras to constantly monitor where we're getting vandalized and stuff like that, but I think it's time we move forward, I know it's a lot of money to get up and running, but Matt, what are cameras, a couple thousand dollars apiece after we get up and running?
The cameras that we plan to use for the police or for various, going to be $1,000, $2,000 per camera, but for the businesses, other organizations that I'd like to get on board, we, we can get cameras on the system for $500, and one of the nice pieces about that is if other organizations do want to use our system, there's a cost savings to them, if an organization that doesn't have a camera system wants a security system, we can provide the backbone, all they need to do is provide the internet connection and the camera, we provide the backbone, the recording and the servicing, so there's a savings there where a person can just go out and buy certain pieces, they, we're providing the other half, so it's a benefit for, you know, people in the town.
And every year, like I said, if we want to buy five, six cameras, 10 cameras during the year if we're having problems somewhere and we want to put more on the path, some more fixed cameras, they shoot, I've, we gave all the distances and spreads and.
We have, the, some of the cameras that was featured in the initial system will have, between, we have a few that are 50 times optical zoom, 28 optical zoom, day-night cameras, full PTZ for 360 capabilities, high megapixel cameras for real, real high clarity in certain areas.
And the cops can turn them cameras.
They have full access for the PTZ 360 cameras.
Turn it, whatever they want to do from the police car.
In real time, yes.
In real time, so you're talking a high-tech system that, I think, something that we really is going to turn things around, not that we're sitting in a town that has high crime, I, I think that we have one of the lowest crime rates in the county right now, but we do get nuisance as far as vandalism and things like that, but it's also great work for drug work, if somebody wants to come and tell us, look, there's drug activity in this home, and they want us to put a portable camera in their window to, to watch a home, the cops can do that, so there's a lot that can be done, and again, that'll be done through the chief and the mayor, not through council, I'm just asking council to approve this expenditure on Monday night's agenda, and let's move forward with this. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Thanks.
I just wanted to, will the police need any training to use the, to learn how to watch all this and get, are they?
It's very, it's a very user-friendly system, I already did a demo for the police, I'm trained on the system, I'll have it at Falls as well, so I'm here to help you guys out, but it's very, very friendly, very, meets the needs of the police very easily.
Thank you.
Anthony?
Yeah, no, it's, it's very, I use it at the bridge and I didn't need any training, I'm sure our police know.
No, they'll be fine.
Yeah. Durability.
We have, all the cameras will be in vandal-resistant housings, depending on if they're a fixed camera or a portable camera, different styles for the area, clip-on styles maybe for the, if we're using on a street light, other styles, if we're trying to be more covert about it, but they are vandal-resistant, they'll take a rock.
You had mentioned the bucket truck, are these, I guess, they have to be wired in, or are they battery-operated?
The system that we're putting in is twofold, but as far as power, no, they will need power, but there are locations where it'll be serviced. By wireless backbone, and other cameras that'll be serviced by a wire drop in the area, but we will use the bucket truck and the electricians to get power at all locations we need.
Mr. De Giuseppe had mentioned the starting price right around $50,000.
Yes.
How many cameras come with that?
That initial cameras will be nine cameras.
Nine cameras?
Yes.
And that, and then we'll have, how many screens roughly?
Screens, I'm sorry.
And you could see the locations of the activity.
Oh, the system, one server, the, one server alone can handle 64 cameras, if you have multiple servers tied together, the screen has many different combinations of how you can, so if you're looking at four different cameras, there's a layout for that, it can go up to 32 at a time if you really wanted to.
And Mr. De Giuseppe, you would like to put this on the agenda, you said that Falls Township is doing this too?
I just did the same presentation over at Falls.
Really?
Yeah, earlier, the, the end of last month.
A lot of these murders in Philly, a lot of these robbers, they're getting caught because they're on camera.
What I said to Matt is, I don't want a camera that if we catch somebody, nobody could identify him, I want a ca, if we're going to do it, we want a camera that's clear as possible to identify who's doing what. Robin?
Just, just kind of what Pat said, so for the $50,000, $60,000, that gets us nine cameras, and you set the system up and the monitors is in the police department?
Yeah, the monitor can be from any computer, it's not limited to any.
Okay.
Any computer, even the cruisers in the police cars when they're up and running with the air cards.
Really?
Will have full access, yeah, you don't actually need to be at the server to administer it at all.
The other thing what I like about this system is, we can all have a number to log in on, or even borough resident could have a number to log in on and view, let's say the five, the, all the tot lots, we want people at home to view that, so we might say to them, this is a code, you go in and view all the tot lots, and call us if there's a problem, on the other hand, they're going to alert, alert the police anyway to let them know, if, again, the Grundy Foundation or other people in town want to put a camera somewhere, if we elect to, we don't have to, take that on and put that on our server, up to 56 or 64 cameras, so, I think that it's a great tool for the chief to use, I think it's a great tool for the police department to use, and I think it's time, I mean, it's 2010, where, you know, we moved this town forward in the right direction, and I think this is just another step to give the borough residents some peace of mind.
Well, we've certainly moved the police department up a few steps.
Chief, you have any comment on that, or?
No, we've been looking at those cameras, like you said, for a while, but then when Matt on board, he just, he just zoomed right through the process.
He's a techy.
Because he was working in Falls Township and he had all this information at hand, the system's great, I've seen it in action, you can zoom in on license plates from, distance is a way you wouldn't believe, you can see activity from distance, also it switches over to, at nighttime, it'll switch over to a higher resolution, I could be at home, or an officer could be at home, be watching, you get a phone call, hey, look what's happening over here on the tot lot or on the baseball field, and go check and, and look from, from any location, anywhere in the, I guess, in the world, so it's a great system, I'm glad Matt jumped on board, and, and these are, the systems are going to be purchased through the state contract.
Yeah, all the items are on the state bid list.
State bid list, which is good.
So, excuse me.
Now, everybody covered what I was going to say.
Well, I know that, like I said, the three of us met with you, and we were impressed with, with you told us, so. Jimmy, did you want to comment on it, or?
No.
I'd like to make that an agenda item also for Monday night, just to run, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
On some quick, the pump house that's located down at Old Route 13, if there's an interested person into taking that, it's a matter of, the council wants to move forward in putting it back out to bid. Can I say this for, can I say this for, no? Approach by Galsarana Funeral Home, who's interested in purchasing the pump house, which has to go out to bid for, to make it a crematory, what he said was that, you know, it's a, there's no operation there, there's no people going in and out, they'll restore the building back to the original facade, and the only people going in there aren't coming out.
It's going to be some people going in there.
Coming out.
Let's be clear about this.
He'll keep the whole property, he'll put the building back, if he's high bid on it, it's a matter of, this council wants that type of operation there.
Is it zoned for that, Ralph, I mean, is that a zoning issue, or?
It is.
Have to get a variance?
Get it zoned. Why don't we do it this way, why don't by tomorrow, everybody let the manager know if you'd be interested in that type of operation or not, and if there's enough support for it, we'll put it out to bid again, meaning that if he's not the high bidder, then we still got to accept whatever goes there, if not, if we're not interested, I think, why Danucci is at the Borough Yard, that building needs to get ripped down, so, anybody want to comment on it now, or?
Well, Ralph, I think any, any use is, is better than knocking it down, and if he's going to invest the money to restore it to its original use, then.
Now, you're looking at a quarter, a quarter of a million.
Put it out for bid, I, I don't want to see it knocked down.
Original condition, not original use.
Pardon?
Original condition of the building, not original use.
Uh, you're right, you're right, okay.
All right, I just want to make sure.
I stand to be correct, you're right.
No, I'm not being critical.
No, you're right.
Estimates are coming in on, because he's been down there and he's been talking to. to different people. The estimates to fix that building is about $250,000.
Put it up to bid.
And we'll, we'll discuss that. Uh, second session. Officer Fait has been reviewing the crossing walks throughout town, and he's making a recommendation back to, uh, the borough on crossing guards, where they should be for the new school year, so we'll be getting updated on that. Hopefully in the next, there's a preliminary findings, but I want to wait on that. The cop hiring grant, are we applying again for?
Yes.
We updating our application?
Yes, I'm meeting with Angie to, to update our application that was in the pending mode at last year, and we have about two weeks to get that completed.
So, if we hire Monday night one police officer, then we'll know about this grant hopefully in the next couple of months.
Yes, I don't know how long it's going to ta, as a matter of fact, I think, I think I saw some paperwork, maybe by September we should hear something, and since, I believe, since we did not have any officers budgeted this year, if we do hire now, I believe, I have to check, but I believe that, that that grant may be retroactive to whoever we hire on Monday night. I'm not sure, I'll have to go to the paperwork again on that.
All right, I think I talked long enough. Jimmy, what do you have?
Uh, yeah, a few items, Ralph. Uh, do we have somewhere written a road program warranty from, from our contractor? Do we have that on file somewhere?
A road program warranty?
Yeah.
Well, they got standing.
Can you give us a warranty on how long the road's on this?
The engineer would, he was here. I wish you would ask Kurt then.
I thought the, um, contractor was going to give us. Well, maybe the manager can, can ask him if he can get us one. I like to say it, if, if, if there's some kind of general contractor's warranty on the road for it. Um, for almost a year now, I've been trying to get lines paid on Jackson Street, and Mrs. Cullen brought it up last month, and, and they're still not done. And if you wait much longer, you'll say it's too cold. So, uh, I, I think we need to put it on the agenda, act on it Monday night.
Mrs. Cullen spoke to Mr. Waldron tonight before the meeting.
Good.
And the lines are, when, when'd you say, George?
Um, we're pretty hot, we're pretty on the schedule, hopefully by the end of July.
Okay. I noticed she brought that up tonight, Jimmy, to Mr. Waldron.
Okay. Um, there's a, uh, a stop sign that was installed at the, at the corner of Monroe and Trenton. Do we have an engineer's report on that stop sign? I don't have a thinking.
Uh, what, what you're talking about?
Basically, we got an inquiry, uh, from, uh, Mrs. Cullen, uh, as to why there wasn't a stop sign there. I asked Maria to check the ordinance to see if in fact there was supposed to be a stop sign at that intersection, and, uh, she said per the ordinance, uh, there is supposed to be a stop sign at that, uh, particular intersection, and I asked Mr. Waldron to install the, uh, stop sign. So, basically, it was a stop sign that should have been there apparently for years per the ordinance, and, uh, Mrs. Cullen raised the question and Maria checked the ordinance and advised that there should have been a, a stop sign there, and that's why it's there.
There was one coming in the, in the one direction, but not in the other direction, and it was a safety issue for children there.
Well, I'm not arguing with it.
No, I'm just saying.
I was just surprised to see it there, and if the chief or the engineer didn't study the intersection, but if you have a copy of the notice, maybe I can put a copy in my mailbox.
You want a copy of the ordinance?
Yeah.
All right, I'll ask Maria to put it in there for you.
Thank you. Uh, I've got some questions on the treasurer's report. Uh, one of my concerns I brought up last month, I voted against the treasurer's report because we have, uh, expenditure from Mr. Alfano last month was 53, uh, almost $5,400, and I hadn't seen a copy of the report. This month, we have a bill from Mr. Alfano for $8,304, and I haven't seen a report. Does somebody have something in writing as, as to what we're getting for that money? I mean, he spent, uh, close to $14,000 in the last two treasurer's reports, and I haven't seen a thing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lutz, I was taken away. What was the question? I do apologize.
The, last month, the treasurer's report, I brought up the fact that Mr. Alfano had submitted an invoice for $5,377, and I voted against it because I felt I hadn't seen a report and I didn't know what $5,300 meant, what it represented. This month, we got another vote from Mr. Alfano for $8,304, and I still don't have a copy of the report. We've spent almost $14,000 for legal fees, and I haven't seen a thing.
Well, it all pertains to, to powerhouse. You know that, we had an executive.
I understand that.
Well, he's not doing it for nothing.
Uh, listen, I don't...
We met last week in the back room. We all decided to have Mr. Alfano...
Well, next time you need the back room, you can invite me.
You were there.
You were there.
You were in there.
No, he didn't have a report last week.
No, let me...
God, where are you talking to us?
No.
Let me finish what...
You indicated to me, in fact, when this came up a few months ago, he had a written report to bury, he took back, he didn't want to leave it here, okay?
You were at that meeting, right?
Okay. The meeting that I missed, Mr. Dillon, or Mr. Alfano invited me and suggested I call him if I had any questions. I refused at $275 an hour. I wasn't going to bill this borough for my phone call to an attorney.
You were, were at the meeting, you wouldn't have had to call.
Unfortunately, I didn't make the meeting.
Okay, but I'm saying, it's not Mr. Alfano's fault.
Not just too many, all right, but I'm not going to sit down and talk to him at $275 an hour.
Well, he, no, he also said to you he would do it at no cost.
No, he didn't say that.
To the borough. Well, I, I can almost guarantee...
Well, we got to, listen, the point is that we have another bill for $8,304, and I don't know what it's for, and I haven't seen anything.
Okay.
Okay, but I'm expected to go along with paying for the bill.
No, let me...
And I'm not, I'll vote against again this month.
Okay.
Unless I see some kind of written report.
Okay, let me refresh your memory. You said you weren't at the meeting when you were at the meeting in the, in the council chamber, that we all sat down and talked. The mayor was there, this entire council was there, including yourself, when we determined that Mr. Alfano had to file the proper papers, the preliminary objections to move this project forward. Are you, don't, do you remember that?
No.
Remember, you said, "I agree with Robin," and we all laughed about that.
Mr. Levo, let me, let me just ask, Mr. Levo, I mean, you're a neutral person here. Do you remember Mr. Lutz being there, us saying we needed him to file these papers?
And every person commented.
And everybody agreed on it. Now, that's what the money was for, Mr. Lutz.
All right, all right, I want to see...
But you sit here trying to say that you don't know what it's for.
I want to see a copy of the report.
Okay, but what I'm saying, Mr. Lutz, you want to explain what Mr. Alfano did?
When you say report, you mean the document he filed?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a public document. He filed preliminary objections in a brief on behalf of the borough, which was authorized that...
I want, I want to see what he has done for $14,000.
You can look at his bill, his bill is itemized.
Fine, give me, I'll, I'll have a copy of his invoices as well.
But you sit here and act like you don't know what he's doing, that we're just, he's just billing the borough.
My item, Ralph. Uh, my next item.
Want to hear when the, the truth.
Ralph, I'm not going to argue with you, Ralph.
No, you, God, Jimmy, what else do you have?
This month's report, apparently we bought a, uh, I'm thinking it's a lawnmower, Ben Salem Lawn Equipment, $8,392. Hello, lawnmower?
Mr. Waldron?
Yes.
That's from Ben Salem. In April, we bought one from Clark Equipment for $8,300.
Check registry again, maybe that's the last thing to print it up, like Angie always...
Question was asked at the work session in April. Check number 4344, um, was, it said Clark Equipment for $8,342.
Is that...
So, you, we purchased two, two lawnmowers?
Can I make a recommendation to...
Pardon? What was Clark Equipment?
I'm going to make a recommendation to council that every single meeting from now on that our bookkeeper attends the meeting.
That's...
Because I'm tired of sitting here, month after month, when you have all day long to pick up a phone, call Angie and ask her this question, but you want to come here and grandstand month after month. Therefore, bring our, our finance director in, let her answer your questions, and pay her overtime to be here, because you're, you just, you don't want to end this.
She'll be fine.
But then it's okay to pay her overtime, Jimmy? I'm, I'm not, I'm not on board with that.
I pick up a phone like everybody else does.
Email. Then we're going to bring her in and pay her hourly?
Let's, let's get beyond that then.
I mean, it's every month, it's the same thing every month.
Wait a minute, can't we discuss it, Jimmy?
I re, I really don't need Angie right now. Uh, I know that you've spent almost $17,000 on lawn equipment. I want to know why it's not brought on this floor before you purchase it. Why do I have to read about it after you already purchased it? If, if five members of this council don't want to buy the lawnmower, it's too late.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
And you pass the budget.
Well, why, it doesn't matter, it's in the budget, we're still spending the money. Shouldn't I know about it before you spend it?
Approve the budget.
It's in the budget, it's been approved.
We just bought two police cars.
A billion dollars' worth of expenditures. You want everything brought before you? I mean, you'd never get anything done.
The chief and detective just got a new car. It was in the budget to purchase them.
Doesn't have to come up for a vote, does it? Just do whatever you want.
What do you mean, do whatever you want?
That's what you're doing.
You already voted on the budget.
Um, the handicap ramps on Wilson Avenue, you made a commitment, you budgeted, we talked about budgeted items?
Mm-hmm.
There's $25,000 in the budget this year for our handicap ramps.
They were for Wilson Avenue? They were for ramps?
Well, Wilson Avenue needs them.
Well, everybody needs them.
And if you come up with another street that needs them, Wilson Avenue's a priority. Wilson Avenue is a main street to the high school.
On streets, so is Beaver Street, so is Rat...
Get more foot traffic.
There's a lot of main streets in town, Jimmy.
Okay, well, let's go them somewhere then.
All right, and we're working with a local contractor that works, he did two of them in Harriman that turned out excellent.
Good.
And we feel that this is the right guy to continue doing these ramps. He's been meeting with our engineer, our engineer stayed with them on the project, they was happy with them, and the kid did a great job. Did, are you aware of that?
Well, you know, we have another meeting if I miss, Ralph.
No, but I'm saying, I mean, did you ask the manager during the day, "How are we making out with the ramps? I seen two new ones put in Harriman."
So, the ramps are going to be taken care of?
Yes.
The bid?
That's fine. They're going to be taken care of.
And they're, well, up to the amount of money that's budgeted in the budget. Hopefully, we can get more bang for our buck because he did, he did two of them already, and he's confident that he can do them for a fixed number. Mr. Waldron's ordering the mats, that belongs in the ramp for the blinds, so we are moving forward on that.
I think that's all I have, Ralph. That's it for now.
No, and I, I don't want to get this back. When are you ever going to come here and have something positive? Is it, does every meeting have to be negative with you?
No.
Is there anything you're ever happy with or positive, or give Bristol a better present?
You know, I, I, I came here, and you sat there and scrutinized me when I suggested that we do Mill Run, and you let...
I didn't scrutinize you, I supported you.
Continue the squander money away without doing something that's really positive.
You're right.
Really positive. No one, developing that piece is positive.
Did you follow up anymore?
Listen, I asked Mr. Dillon to look into some grants.
There are none, we, he did look.
Aren't any?
He did look.
Okay, well, then we got to try another avenue, then. Nobody wants to pay for it.
You brought it up, why don't you do it?
Ralph, that's not my job, Ralph.
When we went and get money for this town...
That's Mr. Dillon's job.
You got it.
And I asked him to do it, and if he did it and he couldn't find any, that's fine.
Okay, but you're saying we're against it.
Well, obviously, you know...
You wonder why the perception of Bristol is bad. It's bad because of people like you that are constantly negative about what happens in this town. Mrs. Cullen, what do you have?
Um, I have one, I have a lot, a couple of things, but I just want to answer this Mill Run thing. Um, I was out talking to the neighbors, because I live right by Mill Run, and I've been questioning people about whether they thought it should be residential and a bunch of houses put in there, and a lot of people are against it. They think it's, it's a horrible idea. So, just because one person thinks it's a good idea, I mean, you know, that's just my comment for that. And it's really weird because it was today that all this was, I was with a group of people in my neighborhoods, and they, you know, just think it's crazy. But anyway, I just want to thank George and his crew for replacing light bulbs immediately after I send emails to Mr. Dillon, he contacts you, and you do it right away, and I, I want to thank you for that. And the stop sign issue, um, that was trouble, it was troubling to me because, um, someone called me and said they almost saw a child get hit, and, uh, we don't need anything like that happening, so, thank you. And I was going to ask about the park lines in front of everyone so that, you know, parking lines, but now we answered that question, so, um, I think that's about it. George, oh, also the trash cans, thank you for the trash cans as well.
Couple of things, Ralph. First one being, we should touch on it before, the ordinance for the, uh, new tot lot, times when it opens, times when it closes, I like to use dusk, but everybody get, like, ate the dusk. Uh, we have to add Tretton Avenue and Spruce Street because in the old ordinance, they're not even in there. And let's see what else we have to do here. Oh, and the ball fields, uh, times when they can't start a game after, you know, it says, it says in the old one here, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. They have to get off the fields unless the agencies, the Recreation Authority and Recreation Director, or authorize employees of the borough, say, like that one night we had all the people here from all over, it was a beautiful night for the borough, but the game didn't get over till 10 after 12, but the people were, well, everybody was wonderful about it. So, I think we need to give this to our solicitor, or everyone get a copy before next month's meeting and look at it, see if we can straighten it up a little bit. Number two, the Bristol Borough Summer Camp will be going, getting underway on June 21st, and will go until July the 30th. It's $35 per person, per child. Uh, six weeks. The camp includes t-shirts, arts and crafts, indoor and outdoor activities, trips to the Grundy Library, the Civil Lake Nature Center, the kids really like that, and they have discount trips to Sesame Place, uh, Bristol Pike Bowling, uh, the theater, free lunch once a week. Uh, the Thunder game can't happen this year because in that time, they play no day games. Usually every year, they'll play one day game and the kids can go, and they don't play one this year.
They have two.
Huh?
They have two-day games.
Well, it's not what I was told. And if there is, I'm sure, they'll, they'll give it a shot, Mayor.
I'll let Sandy know.
Okay. You get a hold of it.
They changed the schedule then, Bob. I know. I know. They may have changed the schedule.
Yeah, but it might have been one of the other places you were working at.
(laugh) Possible.
And, uh, Mr. Dillon, can you give us an update on the revitalization of the Route 13 project? Seems to be getting pretty big.
This, uh, this project has been going on for about five or six years, and again, it deals mainly with the, the safety issue. We've had a number of pedestrian fatalities. Uh, it's the project from, uh, Route 13 and 413 to Levittown Parkway. Uh, there was a meeting this morning, uh, with the Redevelopment Authority, representatives of Pendote, Bristol Township, Tulley Town, Senator Tomlinson's office, and, uh, Representative Emilio's office, as well as county, uh, Planning Commission members. Uh, the project is roughly in the area of twelve to fifteen million dollars. It would involve curbs and sidewalks, a median barrier, not a barrier, but a, uh, place where people can walk and, and stand and then, then go across the other side. Uh, the project, uh, is on the county's, uh, number one, uh, list, a number one project that's been reported to the, uh, state, uh, Transportation Improvement, uh, list. Uh, it's before the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and if everything goes right, uh, construction should start, uh, September, scratch that, uh, in the spring of 2012. It will involve, uh, additional improvements to the traffic signals at 413 and 13 Commerce, uh, entrance there. So, uh, major, uh, safety improvements for, for that area, and, uh, right now, everything seems to be on schedule for spring 2012 construction start, so.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Mr. Savatini.
No, I would like to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Musi said about the camp opening up on the 21st of June. Um, it's probably one of the most successful events we have in the borough. It gives the kids a great opportunity for a lot of different venues. Um, I'm curious about the demolition. If, I know that this is a school board issue, but maybe, um, someone might be enlightened or have some information about, uh, the old school. When, is there a?
Demo has to be complete before September.
Oh, really?
All the asbestos has been removed.
Okay.
The contract has been awarded, and I think they're going to start once the kids are out of school, the demo.
Great. Um, the canal. Any, uh, any, anything or any word out there about, uh, opening up the canal from Washington to Beaver? Or is that still on hold down the road?
Nothing. I think not. Nothing yet.
Um, again, to the police, uh, department, Marty, uh, we're going to have more activity and more people, more police, uh, presence on Jefferson Avenue during these busy nights. I mean, Memorial Field is probably one of the best fields in the county, and it is a very, very busy place, and people do go through there. Sometimes they miss the stop sign at Mansion. That's all I have to say. Mr. Allen.
Um, I wondered if I could ask counsel, I believe the original, uh, grant amount that we purch, that we got for the purchase of the tot lot equipment was a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. It seems that we're somewhat below that, and I think that we could really use a tot lot in the West Ward. My thought would be in between where the bike shop is on, um, Pond Street and Grundy. It's a nice big field, and there really isn't anywhere for the children. So if you would just consider that, perhaps we can get an idea, George, what the cost would be to create another one. Um, also, and I'm going to throw it out there, and you guys can think about it a little bit, maybe at next week's meeting, it's not even in my ward, but, um, lights at the basketball courts. Uh, it seems like our teenagers need a place to hang them. When I walk the dogs on the bike path at night past the basketball courts, I've seen those kids with, um, uh, their cars, you know, pointing their headlights at it. It just seems like we could try it. We could maybe put them up and see if, you know, turn them off at 10:30 or 11 o'clock, and it just seems like teenagers, too, need a place to hang, and the courts are there. We don't need to do a whole lot except light them. Civil Service will be ready with an eligibility list that we'll talk about if you guys don't mind a quick executive session. And I wondered, um, from the solicitor, where are we with the ordinance to put the town center into the compliance with the property maintenance code that we voted on in March? Mr. Salerno.
I thought we discussed this. I'm still waiting for directions from counsel as to exactly where we're going to cover.
March? Um, well, then let's, can we talk about that then? I mean, now, or is that something we should do? I mean, I thought what we talked about was the town center.
Well, I don't.
Which would go from, uh, 100 block of Red Clough Street to the end of Mill Street.
Right. Town center includes Market Street also.
Well, you can, all right, well, you can, that's not a problem.
You meet with the solicitor since it's your ward and come up with a format to present us and see what is, you know what I mean? Come up with what area you want to cover, what's historical, what's not.
I guess I don't think it's that complicated. My, my, it's been since March.
So what do you want to cover? All of them?
I want to cover, I want to cover the town center, the business district. I mean, if we, we don't include Market Street, that's fine.
Do you want to do a rough draft on that, Billy?
Yeah, boarded up businesses in the town center, and I met with the hardboard, as did Mr. Dillon and the zoning, uh, officer, and we sat and we went through signage, and I'm working so hard, and it just, it's counterproductive to have boarded up buildings. The bike shop is boarded up now. It's, it just looks awful. Can you include just the town center bill?
Whatever counsel wants.
Does counsel want us to include the town center? Can we talk about this?
I mean, anybody have any opinions either way to?
Tell me now. If you don't want to do it, tell me now.
Here's the only, the only thing, I think that any storefront and anything that's out there that's boarded up should have glass in it. There's no question. But if it's an abandoned property, by law, the insurance company, the properties we own, want plywood on the windows. Now, you could paint it, you could try to make it look good, but we can't keep a building without plywood on it. But I think in the town, going down Mill Street, anywhere there's plywood on windows, I think should be glass. Is that something that you're trying?
That's, that's all I'm trying to do, is that we don't have boarded up.
Mr. Salerno, why don't you write up a template for us to vote on?
Please. I agree.
I just want somebody to give me their input. If you're against it, tell me. Anthony, how do you feel about this?
Sounds a little better now with the glass. Before, I was against it because I, I go, well, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander.
I don't know what you mean.
Well, other places in town, you have to put glass and wood up there.
But this is, but this is simply the town center, only in the business district.
But it's simply, I'd have to go into the North Ward and say, well, you're, we have to do it different here than we do it in the town center. I don't like that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
But the historic, but the historic district has to do things differently than, than on, on Bath Street.
Why?
Because it's the historic district.
Hard.
Historic. It's hard. They have, if they want to put a sign up in, on Mill Street, if they open a business and they want to put a sign up, they have to go before the hardboard, and the hardboard will dictate to them what kind of sign, what, what, what kind of lettering.
That is an opinion. And my opinion is, we have to, if we do, we have to do it for the whole town, not just for one part of town when it comes to boarding up windows. That's my opinion. I'm not saying.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I'm, I'm glad to have it. I'd rather it.
That's my opinion.
I'd rather it be out in, in, you know.
It's out there, baby.
Okay, good. What? Nothing. I got nothing else.
Uh, Mrs. Salerno, what do you have?
I have a number of things I think we need to discuss in executive session.
There's just two more things before, I don't know if the mayor has anything, but one, can you do a template on this leash law for us and let us know, uh, how we would incorporate that into?
It's a call for the dogs. Who do we have now?
What?
Dangerous Law.
Law or?
Motion. Well, it won't be the dangerous law. We're just going to.
To incorporate this into whatever we have, or come up with a template that we all can look at next month.
But just, yeah, just so you understand, we're going to further define confinement, uh, if counsel wants, uh, which we're permitted to do, to, to define confinement as requiring a leash. That's what we're looking at.
Something that you can give us a look at.
And did we implement the ordinance that we voted on about the fences for confinement? Is that done?
That was adopted.
And we adopted that ordinance? Okay, okay.
All that's been in place.
Okay.
Mr. Dillon, what do you have? You got four and five?
Uh, yes. Yes. Item four, possible consideration Monday evening. In your packet was a, uh, proposal from Penone Associates to implement, uh, a portion of the, uh, DCNR grant that the borough received about two years ago. It's the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar matching grant. Uh, DCNR is, wants, uh, some sort of progress shown. Uh, they're, uh, some, they would just like the, you know, counsel to advise DCNR what they intend to do with the grant. Uh, this proposal, in essence, uh, contains Penone Associates, Evan Stone, who we've been working with for the last couple of years, uh, to address, uh, uh, providing plans to DCNR, going through the process, uh, of all necessary permits and going out the bid for improvements, uh, to the varsity baseball field mainly. Uh, we will be able to use, uh, our match, as part of our match, the tot lot that was discussed previously this evening. Uh, that's about a seventy-thousand-dollar tot lot with the Jefferson Avenue complex. That money we will get from the Community Development Fund, so we'll use that seventy thousand towards our match of, uh, whatever we're going to do at the Jefferson Avenue complex, uh, using DCNR funds. So, uh, this is their proposal. It, it does not involve the new lighting. It would involve some, uh, new bleachers, uh, throughout the complex, but mainly address the concerns, uh, of really, uh, the, uh, the hardball field.
Mr. Dillon, then they also say that we can use our labor match towards that, too?
Yes, that, that would be part of it.
Meaning that if our guys are down there doing things on the field, they spend, we can use whatever we pay them towards our match?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's, uh, suggested that counsel, uh, accepts this proposal dated May 28th at your public meeting, so, uh, we can proceed with this process. The idea would be to try to accomplish it, uh, by October, this work. So it'll be fast-tracking, but hopefully everything will be ready for next ball season.
Is to authorize the sale of the Ford and Crown Victorian? Have a problem with that?
Uh-uh.
Glad to bid to sell them two vehicles?
Six dollars for them.
The Christmas parade has to be an agenda item, Mr. Dillon.
I think it would be appropriate if you'd like, uh.
That's fine. Rest self-explanatory, right?
Pardon me?
The rest of the things are.
Uh, yes. The only other thing, uh, I was, uh, starting to put together, the Sewer Authorities Packet, uh, they meet, uh, next week, and, uh, George Waldron, uh, gave me a copy of Paul Yezzi's, uh, report, and he, he is one of our wastewater treatment plant operators, and if you give me a second, I think it's important, uh, you know, you've been reading about certain municipalities or whatever, running sewer plants, getting all types of citations, and, uh, apparently, uh, subject to, uh, significant fines, uh, or penalties. But if I may, uh, this is a memo to George from Paul, and it states, as you know, the Bucks County Health Department, which is governed by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, conducted their annual inspection of the Bristol Borough Wastewater Treatment Facility on Wednesday, June 2nd. This year's inspection went exceptionally well. The plant is well within the parameters of compliance that are set, uh, by the NPDES discharge permit. Uh, these are the requirements that are listed as to what, uh, the treatment, uh, requirements are for the discharge into the, uh, the creek and thus into the river. The, uh, environmental specialists, uh, leading the inspection inquired and were provided the duties and responsibilities of Tom Wallach, a licensed plant operator, Paul Yezzi, licensed plant operator, John Driscoll, plant operator, and Jose Rosado, plant operator. The facility's records and documentations were examined and verified for accuracy. Uh, the inspection, uh, also considered, consisted of a tour through each of the many stages of the water treatment process, where all operational procedures for each stage were explained. During the tour, the specialists expressed that they were very pleased to see the cleanliness and good condition of the tanks and commented on the clarity of the effluent that's being discharged. They also provided positive comments on the upgrades implemented to the plant's processes and the progress made within the last year, and they asked that, quote, uh, that they keep up the good work. So, I mean, this is a real positive, uh, response. The report, uh, their inspection report's about eight pages long, but this is a summary, so I, I just thought that was, uh, you know, shows you what type of job, uh, George and Tom and Paul and, uh, Jose and John are doing down there, so, you know.
Great.
Just one thing. I'd like to ask Mr. Waldron a question.
Sure.
Mr. Waldron, last month's meeting, I, uh, read some letters from Nancy Brown's second grade class about the tot lots, and it seemed like their main concern was they'd like to have a swirly slide. Can we get one of them, please?
He's going to get his head chopped off if he don't get a swirly slide.
I'm going to get my head chopped off.
Good question, and maybe you could talk to the school. Isn't there a brand-new playground or tot lot put back where the old school it was?
Yes.
What are they going to do with that? Could we move that equipment out where Robin's talking?
I don't know what kind of shape it's in. Maybe we can look at it.
They just spend, I mean, what, four or five years ago?
Yeah.
A lot of money on that.
Money on it.
Yeah. Or maybe I'll go right here.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great to put it in a public, where she wants it now. You could see it out there, and you don't have to worry about your kids going or. Any public participation? Anybody? Anybody want to step up to the microphone and state your name, please? And your address.
My name is Vicki Waite. I live at 706 Course and Street. I left a message for you. I've talked to Mr. Winslow. I don't think anybody consider, the people that lived along the tracks, where the trees are. And what that meant to our homes. Um, it's amazing to me that Amtrak, they pull so much power, but nobody forced them to clean up that area years ago. That, those trees shaded our backyards. That, that was my refuge when I went out back and looked out at, at those trees. I had called Mr. Dillon. Mr. Dillon was kind enough to, to have a sign put out there, no dumping, because people thought the area was a dumping ground. I was out there, I cleaned that area up. It was a beautiful, beautiful area. I, I can see in this, this, this room that everybody's worried about aesthetics. Well, you take a ride down Course and Street tonight, tomorrow, and you tell me what's so aesthetically pleasing about the railroad and what they did to those trees and what they did to my, and what they did to my home. Okay? Changed the heat in my house, changed the whole look of my backyard. It's, it's, it's unbelievable, and I know it just didn't affect me. My neighbor next to me, everybody, I get, I call, I call the borough, and they say, well, everybody's happy about it. Well, no. No, everybody's not happy about it. And if we're so happy about aesthetics and so, so worried about aesthetics in this town, you tell me what can be done to fix it, because there's still a bunch of garbage out there. And they poured chemicals, chemicals, all over that area to kill the tree stumps, I guess. I was told they were going to plant grass. But you know what? There's a big difference in walking out on your back porch and seeing trees and life and seeing.
Stone.
And the tracks. Not only that, you know, it, it was a buffer. It was a buffer from stones flying. It was a buffer from dust flying. It was a buffer, it was a buffer that made me feel safe. You know, if the train ever came off the track, there'd be something to stop it.
I don't think them trees are going to stop it.
Well, I, I know, but it's, it's the, it's the idea, sir. It's the idea.
I, I agree a hundred percent with you. It looks barren, you know, there's just, the green made it look like something, but that's a project that nobody here has anything to do with.
But, sir, that.
We can't tell Amtrak what to do with their property.
But you can tell me what to do with mine.
Well, your property is.
If, if I, if my.
We can't come in your yard and tell you to cut your tree down or plant a tree or.
Well, how come there were citations for the lady that lived in the house before me for not cutting her grass?
Well, that's different. I mean, if the place is a pigsty and our grass needs to be cut.
But that's what you were saying was happening over there with the, the, you know...
Well, let me, let me just, so I, it's not, Bert, our emergency management coordinator has been involved in this project, Mr. Winslow. Can you address this concern? Because you're, you're the guy that's involved in this day-to-day operation. You wanna come up here and... Swinging at each other.
No, I don't think it'll get to that. Actually, when, when Ms. Waite initially, not the first time she called, but the second time she called, I was really taken aback because I have here a, an email that came from Bridget Cullen to the manager on March 22nd. And, and Ms., Ms. Waite called the borough at that time. And I'll read what the email says. It says, "Vicki Waite, 706 Courseon Street, called to speak with you, Mr. Dome, and you were in a meeting. She does not have a computer and she asked me to forward her concern. She said she called you around two years ago regarding the trash and shrubbery which had accumulated along the railroad banks between Courseon and Pine Street. She said the storm had left a lot of small branches along with the trash along the banks. She feels that this is a fire hazard and is afraid when the grass and weeds start to grow that the trash will be covered. She mentioned to, to you two years ago that maintaining the railroad banks was the railroad's responsibility, but thought she would ask if we could do anything, meaning the borough." I, I think the borough has. We've tried numerous times to get Amtrak to move on this, on this situation, and they've never had any money. Now, they have a lot of money that they're putting into the northeast corridor, and this is part of the problem. And yes, what she says is true about the trees and all being a barrier. It wasn't a great barrier. It was so great that we, emergency services, would never have been able to get up to the tracks if we had a train fire, a derailment, an accident, or to get people off of a, a train that broke down and get them down to buses. Sure, it's a different look. There, there's nothing there. And this is the way that that bank looked every day when I went to elementary school, when the railroad used to maintain it on a regular basis. There's 42 years of growth that's just been removed from those banks. I have many pictures of this project, and some of these trees were 60 feet high. They went higher than the cadencery electric system that runs the railroad. And looking at some of the cut bases along the embankments, a lot of the centers of these trees have been rotted out. So if a lot of these trees had been up during that windstorm we had yesterday, I'm sure some of them would have came down, as one did about two years or three years ago that hit Mr. Wooder's house that lived on Pine Street. So, number one, Amtrak is taking care of their responsibility, and they're also taking care of a liability that they would have if the trees fell.
But this isn't a borough project. This is going, all, you said, the whole northeast corridor is getting done.
When I called them, when we started the initial project with the bridges, I asked if there was anything that they could do with the vegetation and the trees. And to my surprise, they, they came out and looked, and they said, yes, there is. We have money and we can get it started pretty soon. I wanted them to only start at the Borough Line, which is, is the, the Creek Bridge at Otter Creek and go to Green Lane. They started at 413 and went all the way, they're gonna go all the way to Grundy Switch Tower on both sides. Now, Ms. Waite said in, in one of her messages that she left for me, and I had talked to her three times, she left me six messages, that we were picking and choosing, only because she thought that they were only gonna go down to one side. When they're finished, they're gonna go back up the other side, and the borough will have both sides of the Amtraks lined up.
But, but look, it's gonna change the whole look of Bristol. You take all those trees down along 413, you're telling me they're all gonna come down, right? Along 413?
I...
On 113?
They said that they're gonna take them all down.
So if they take all those trees down, the, the whole landscape of Bristol changes. The whole landscape. Now, you just take a look at Courseon Street and look at how the landscape changed. I wasn't complaining because the brush, I was complaining because people thought they could trash the place. I didn't want trees that, I just wanted debris picked up. You could have, you could have manicured those streets. You could have manicured those trees down. You did not have to bludgeon those streets. And then, and when they take, and that's what they're doing. And it's gonna be chemicals. How close have they gotten on these trees?
Well, Merle, I think it's something that we have the right, I think, to make a determination what they do.
What they said to me was, if, if we come in and do this project, we hire one of three contractors, and we say, we want you to start at point A, and we want you to stop at point B. And the contract's issued, and they're told to clear it.
They don't go through the tire ridges around for you to say you're gonna take this one out, you're not gonna take that, and you're only gonna cut so much over the top.
They won't do that. They wanna get it done, and now you won't see them again for another 35 years, probably.
Well, maybe we gotta go plant some trees after they leave. Well, I'm not telling you to do anything.
Now, please take a ride down Courseon Street.
I seen it. I seen...
It's devastating.
Behind your rescue squad and all that area. I'm just hoping when they plant the grass and they let the grass grow green and it starts to fill in, I think it's gonna look a lot nicer, but...
Well, they're still, they're still working down on Howe Street. These fellows go in advance and take the trees and the shrubs and so forth out. And then they have a, a follow-up guy that picks up the, the big logs and things that they don't, they don't chip. And then there's another fellow that has a track bobcat that comes along and pulls down all the old ties that's been laying on the bank for years that you couldn't see before, and they're gonna get rid of them. And then he'll grade whatever's there. If you have trash or stuff, they're picking that up and taking it. And then they're gonna hydroseed it when it's done.
I think it's gonna look good. I think the trees, I understand what you're saying, but if, if it's all green grass and it looks nice...
I understand what she says, too. You know, but I look at it strictly from a safety standpoint and, and...
Safety standpoint and living there, I understand what you're saying.
But for 30 years, where was the safety? For 30 years, 30 years, we didn't care about safety. Now, all of a sudden, we care about safety. It's just amazing. What, because we have money now that we can, I don't get it.
No. We've, we've tried numerous times over the years. I remember different councils going to try to get Amtrak to do something. And back then, they, their excuse was that they didn't have the money. Now, they got a grant to do this, and they said, fine, we're gonna do it now and get it done. And it's, you know, tough. I, I remember times when the borough used to cut the grass at the train station and, and tried to bill Amtrak for it, and, you know, we never got paid.
I think the lady in the back wants to speak.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I live on Race at the end of railroad tracks, and they cleared a section of that, and they left one section unclean. You know where you go up?
They have...
To the alleyway?
Yes. They have measurements of their property. And I have a copy of, of the plans of it. And it's not the same all the way along the railroad. Some of it's 40 feet, some of it's 70 feet, some of it's 20 feet. And they go according to that. And so...
So they just unleave that section, what they're...
They would leave, yes, they would leave that, because it's not their property. They're not gonna cut.
Who's property is that?
That's probably whoever lives next door to your, the last house there.
No, it's on the other side, side.
Oh, there's a, there's a paved, there's a paved piece of, of road there. It goes to the back. And I think there used to be an additional house there next to that last one at one time, years ago.
Maybe you meet out there and summon in to get her phone number, and let's find out who owns it.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I'd like to make a comment. I know, real quick, we have tried, I've been up here 13 years. We've been trying to get Amtrak to come out here and do some work. Okay? Clean up the logs or the, the ties. Clean up this, clean up that. We actually had someone come up here that lived on Pine Street, I believe, that the tree actually went into the, into the bathroom. Can you please cut the tree down? And we had to take care of it because Amtrak was not responding. We first started this project by looking at the bridge apartments. If you look at your bridge, Courseon Street, okay, that dates back to 1910. It's 100 years old. It has exposed rebar. It has exposed, I mean, it's a, it's gonna be taken care of. Then, this other project came up, and they said that they were gonna clean it up and hydroseed it. Now, I know right now, it doesn't look pretty. Once that hydroseed gets done, you're gonna see a difference. It's something that we have been after Amtrak for, for years. And Mr. Winslow will tell you that he's been after it for a long time also, and that previous council people have been trying to get Amtrak to get off their ass and do something. Now, we finally got someone in here. I've not had one complaint. You're the first, Merle, I've just been keeping in touch with me. You're the first person I heard that did not like what was going on. But if you look at the long picture, we're getting a complete cleaning up. He had mentioned about the trees that were hollow. Can you imagine that tree either going into the railroad area? Possible derailment, or say it came over and went home?
And I do understand that that's why I said if you would have manicured them.
No, it's, it's, see, and here's another problem. It's not Bristol Borough's property. It's Amtrak's. We do not have the right to tell Amtrak what to do and what not to do.
Well, how come they can get away with that?
Oh, they get away with what, though?
With not taking care of property. I can't get away with that.
Well, we finally got them here to do something.
30 years later.
We got them. It's, it's been a very, very long battle to get them here. And previous administrations have tried to do it. Merle, when was the last time, do you remember, that Amtrak was in this town?
He was in diapers.
Try to remember that you are seeing the cut down. Spraying. Trust me, according to the DEP and all that stuff, and Merle, if you wanna get real specific, I'm sure there's an MSDS sheet. I don't know if you know what that is?
Yes.
Material Safety Data Sheet. It'll tell you what they're spraying, okay? And then, next will come the hydroseeding. Hydroseeding, if you wanna get an idea what it looks like, go by the lagoon. Cause after we got done doing the lagoon, we got about 30 feet of it done. This cost Bristol Borough no money to do this. And there could been, could have been a catastrophe. I understand that you're looking at blank now, but they allowed this to go too long. And this is what happens when they do it. And for the fire department or for a tragedy, or if a tree went down and damn, had a derailment, it'd be catastrophic.
Who, does anybody else, sir, wanna state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Berger, Darren Jones, senior pastor of Second Baptist Church on Race Street. And I'm sorry to disappoint you, however, we at the church are very glad to see that all of that stuff has been removed. So it's just kinda strange to say that it's a little bit unfortunate for you, but we are very happy that whoever was instrumental in getting it removed, it is now removed. That's one thing. The second thing that I wanted to do also is to let you know that we at the church are celebrating our 100th and 25th church anniversary. And if there is anything that the borough would like to do in order to help us to commemorate that, I wanted to be able to bring that to your attention at this point.
I think if you have any...
It is September, September, I think it's the 12th. 12th is the actual Sunday that we're going to be celebrating it. And during the week of September 6th through, through 12th, will be the period that we're going to be celebrating the 125th anniversary.
Would definitely like to recognize your church and all as a borough and have you up here to receive.
We'd like to also invite you to come as well.
Will you send us an invitation so we don't forget?
I believe you...
Put to the manager.
Contact, I'll give you after the meeting, the borough manager's email.
Okay.
Email him, and the two of you can go back and forth, and we'll have something set up for September.
Compliment you in saying that you keep a beautiful church and a beautiful yard over there.
Well, we try to do the best we can.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna comment on anything before we adjourn? Are you motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
We need an executive session. Don't leave. Sit down.